We'll record it so you can start anytime you're ready here.
Okay, I call the village of Ryback, Albany, for lot seven, 2023 to order. The first item on the agenda is a quick overview of continued business for eight, ten chestnuts. The Warren has discovered some interesting things there and wants to tell us what you're going to do to sort of modify the site plan.
Right, actually Samantha, the builder's been discovering it, but and I think, I know we took some photos. The original plan was to have six windows across the front. We felt quite certain that the two middle windows, square windows, were not original. And we were going to have, sort of replicate these in the middle. But as we removed the, as we removed layers, both the existing composite shingle siding and remove the interior finish and can see what's framing in the walls, it became apparent that what was originally in the front view was in fact a double window, separate with a wide mullion where the party wall, which was two by fours in the flat, came in, came into the front exactly as it does still at the back between their two bathrooms. So whether there were bathrooms in the front or something else, the exact same thing ran all the way through. And what's interesting is just as on these side windows, the paired windows and the rear window, there was that little sediment effect in the front. So obviously, we're going to want to replicate that, recreate it. We have the template in the rear window at the back to use for that. So that was a neat discovery. And then as the siding has come off in the gables, we found that in fact what is up there are alternating rows of horizontal and then sort of shaped shingles, sort of diagonal at the bottom, sort of two rows of the decorative shingles, two rows of flat shingles. And that's both in the two end gables and also in the higher gable in the middle one of the front.
And?
Yeah, the box base have the same decorative shingle pattern underneath the windows, the triple windows on the two sides. So since Samantha is very excited about, you know, bringing this as back as far, as close to what, you know, we can establish was there originally, each of those changes will incorporate as we, you know, restore the house. But we want to make sure that you're aware of that and sort of on board with that. I mentioned earlier to David Miller, initially, we found some colors of stained glass windows in the attic that we thought perhaps had been on the front. But it turned out, no, they were actually in the side where there are movers on the two sides.
Here, actually, you can see is where it has the vents on either of the gable ends. We actually found during demolition directly below those vents on either side was a pair of stained over clear and their four identical window sets that perfectly matched the openings. So the intent is to restore the windows and put those back in as well.
Sure. Are you going to be able to salvage the existing materials, the siding?
So that's the question always because the siding is applied directly over the sides. There is no sheathing. And so from the inside, particularly with everything open up, you can see all the air holes. So in order to install sheeting so we can insulate that properly, we have to remove the siding. The truth is, no matter how carefully you do it with old wood siding, it tends to be dried out and split.
There's also, I would say, quite a number of cracks in the shingles just from the cement board that have been attached to it.
Right, and the nail holes, lots of nail holes from those shingles in the front. So it will be removed as quickly as possible. But at worst case, we are going to be able to replicate this. You see, some of them are the scallop edges and some have the sort of little diagonal cut to the bottom. So it's really quite elaborately done. And that sort of gets back to the whole question, it's like for a two family house, somebody's really took a lot of trouble, put a lot of detail on it. And what Samantha's been able to salvage from her builder is there were some connecting doors between the two sides on both levels.
Original, yeah.
And so it's pretty clear, it was built by two partways of the same family and they were communicating throughout. And so they collaborated to build this house, but they wanted a nice house. And so it was not built as like a rental. It was built as a basically a true family shared house. So we just want to make sure that you understand that we're going to replicate, salvage and reuse and replicate all of that detail. But it's a little different from the somewhat simpler presentation that we made when we came before the planning. What there is sort of with just that everything moved on the exterior. And you can see again on the side, a pair of window, that's the same detail. It's above the paired window in the back on the second floor. And that's a detail that we're going to put on the double window in the center of the gable, above the center of the front porch, which was the original window.
Yes, you can see, you can see the evidence here.
Yes, exactly right.
So that's where it will go and these two small ones will go away.
They will.
And the scallops under here, which have also been exposed, will they be retained?
Yes, yep.
Uh huh, so you've got the scallops in all the peaks.
Mm hmm.
Collaborates opened up and you've got this nice feature here.
Yeah, well, and it's nice because it's hard to see in the photo, but they actually took care to run the scallops up the side of the box bay too. So it's really, yeah, I think it's, it's really actually quite, quite beautiful. Some of the tread work went down underneath.
This is going to be really nice.
Very excited about it.
Does anyone have any questions or does anyone feel that we need to have a formal modification of the site plan? Or that this is better than the site plan and we're comfortable with it?
Yeah, the only thing I would encourage is that, especially the scalp stuff in the peaks, to try to leave that alone, not take it off and put sheeting underneath it and then put it back if you can. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's sort of the attic peak, it might be possible to fit in sheeting behind, you know.
You can put insulation if you want to insulate it.
Do you want to go from behind?
And put the sheeting on the other side.
Right.
Something to protect it so you don't touch it.
That helps, you know, and really the shape.
It does, it's kind of protected by what's over it.
Yeah.
The other interesting thing about that front view that was just up is that, you know, we noted before the, the cross in the window of the gable that's slightly off. We don't think that could have been just an accident or oversight. We think that was deliberately done and it's going to be preserved as well.
Yeah, it's just kind of funny.
Yeah, and if you can salvage any of the siding, I would urge you to put it on the front.
Yes, right, of course.
And put the replacement stuff on the back.
Right.
So just one question. All right, so in the, in the new proposal here, we see the, we see these windows back the way they were. And we see four columns. Currently, the house has five columns because there were two doors.
Right.
So this intentionally was done to center. And instead of having a door here and here, we're centering this door.
Right.
And putting the wide steps up to it.
Right.
These windows to the side here will have mullions.
Yeah, so our.
They seem to be shown in this.
Yeah, that seems, I don't know, right. There's another error in the elevation. It shows vertical divisions in those narrow windows. There never were and there won't be.
Yeah, the print out here is correct. I think in the rendering there it shows. Yes.
So yes, the, you're right, the side lights at the front door will also not be large pieces of that.
No, they, no, they won't. And the, the front door was, we're going to basically take the design of the existing doors and replicate it at a slightly just larger scale, I guess, in order to fit a simple front door.
Right.
But it will be the same. And then we're going, planning to reuse those original front doors actually on the interior of the house.
Yeah, the note says here ninety-six inch four panel exterior. Retain existing doors for research reuse, I see. And the columns that here shows a lot more detail. So the detail of the columns will be the same as the existing columns.
It will be, it will.
We're going to reuse.
We're going to reuse the existing columns, yeah.
Yeah.
And matching, matching on the side entry.
Yes.
That's the plan.
Yes, and for, I mean frankly, for the rear porch of the all around here as well.
So how does the board have a view about this? And do we just need to put in the minutes that we're okay with these changes? Or do we want to make a formal motion?
I just make a motion to accept the amended site plan as proposed. With attention of the decorative shingles in the columns and on the bay, bay windows and recreation of the windows on the front and in the two gables, the stained glass.
Should we just make that motion?
I did.
Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Focusing paper.
Aye.
Good.
Very, very great. Very nice.
We're very excited.
Nice discovery.
Yes.
Should we give it a floor when it's all done?
Yeah, of course. You can come in.
Okay, second item on the agenda is a public hearing for pool at sixty-four sixteen Montgomery Street. And I have a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
All set and ready.
Both in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Ryan, did we get a ruling from Justin as to block coverage, number of accessory structures? Comparison to the size of the accessory structures to the main building, does it all fit in the code?
Yes, Chair, just give me one minute just to catch up. Yes, Mr. Chair, the court enforcement officer, Justin Naughton, I, I always issued a letter. Hopefully, you all received it earlier today. A copy was shared with the applicant and his architect. And Justin did find that based on table one depicted on sheet A zero zero two of the proposed site plan, that indeed the pool and pavilion meet the bulk area of requirements set forth in chapter one twenty dash eight dimensional table and the calculated zoning requirements set forth in chapter one twenty dash twenty-seven, residential general provision subsection A, accessory structures, number two.
Would the applicant like to make a brief overview of what the plans offer? Or any members of the public would come to the public hearing and we'll connect if you have questions. Jeff has all the images.
Okay, so again, my name's Kevin Compton, Compton Architecture. What Ryan just sort of ran through real quick was we updated, we had a conversation with Justin regarding the building areas from our previous meeting last month. What we had last month was just the first floor plan, the first floor footprint area. What we, after talking with Justin, it was determined that it's the building area. So we'd added in the second floor and even the finished space on the third floor, updating the total buildable area to thirty, to the existing building area exclusive of porches and decks to thirty-two hundred square feet, almost thirty-three hundred square feet. So with the total accessories, structures, we're at twenty-one hundred square feet of accessory footprint where we're allowed to have up to twenty-four hundred, twenty-four sixty-nine square feet of coverage. So, yeah, so, so, and then if you could zoom out or when you're done with that interruption. Since we met last time, we've updated and edited this site plan slightly to include the septic rings in the backyard, which are the two circles between the proposed pavilion and the back of the house. There are two dash circles. There they are, there they are somewhere there. So we've updated those, included those on. And the other change that we made after some research and talking with the pool company, we've, we've opted to leave the equipment, proposing to keep the pool equipment behind the shading structure along the rear of the property line. And we've actually gotten rid of that berm that we're proposing. And in lieu of that, what we're doing is we've put a secondary fence, a four foot tall fence around the equipment. Then there'll be the landscaping and then there's going to be a six foot tall fence beyond that. We found out from the pool company that the pump operates around sixty-five decibels, which is equivalent to this conversation right now, which is equivalent to sort of the standard air conditioning compressor that most of us have outside our house when it's running at high speed. These are variable speed pumps, so they don't run high all the time. They're scheduled based on a slew of factors as to when it goes to low, medium, or high throughout the day. We feel pretty comfortable that, we feel very comfortable that, that the four foot tall fence that's going to be around the equipment, the buffer of landscaping and then the fence, the six foot tall fence, which is now been clarified to be a feeder fence on the plans, that that will remediate the noise transfer from this project to the, the neighbor's property in the rear of the property.
Do we have the one that shows the height, especially the height of that chimney?
The photograph? If you, they're, they should be in.
Should be, yes.
Well, there's the plans and then there's the three D, the sort of photo renderings.
Okay, is that the?
Take a look at, take a look at that.
Is that the enlarged perspective file?
Yes, is that, oh, is that what you're looking for? You're looking for a two dimensional?
No, there was a picture that showed the, it's like, I think, how, how high is the chimney from the fire pit?
Oh, so if you go back, sorry, back to that PDF that you were looking at before this one. Nope, sorry, close that one. It's the, it's the second, go over to, one more tab, there it is. No, it's not, keep going. That one, go down and then. Keep going, keep going. Keep going. There it is. So that's fourteen, four plus, so the top of the chimney will be roughly fourteen, four plus two feet. So sixteen foot four to the top of that chimney. Above greater.
That's a fire pit or a fireplace?
Fireplace. So the building code requires us to have a chimney two feet taller than anything within ten feet horizontal of it. And the structure's twenty by twenty, so.
For the wood burning fireplace, not the propane.
And one of the aspect photos you showed us the last time, which I think is in one of these files, shows what it's like from the parking lot of the neighborhood.
Correct, so that's still in that, we haven't changed those because anything that's visible from, I think we closed it down.
Yeah, okay. There it is. So this, this one here.
Correct, so you're seeing the shed that's behind the spa, there's their, their building and there's our pavilion in half of it. And if you look right over it, there's a sort of a gray, no, I believe it's further to, it's the light gray that I believe is the top.
Yeah.
And that photo was taken standing, you know, on the sidewalk along the street, not within the property, but that's.
So here's, here's the pavilion.
Correct.
Looking at it from the Haven parking lot. Here's the top of the chimney, where, where the will be.
I'm sorry, where the.
This is where the top of the chimney will be.
Yes, correct.
According to this.
Yeah, I don't think there is much of an impact on the spa. I was just concerned about the neighbors to the rear on that side of the fence that would, near the pumps.
So visibility things from the neighboring property along the rear of the property, what they're going to see from their property, I believe in the yard, you know, there's going to be a six foot tall fence along the property line. So anything that's going to be visible is going to be probably the top of that roof and the side profile of that chimney as well, so.
Do you have a print of the picture of, like you did the diagram from Haven? Did you do that with the rear property?
No, I didn't, it's your property, right?
Yeah.
No, so I didn't walk onto your property to take pictures, I didn't.
You have the right to.
Wait, I'm sorry.
We, I'd like to know if there are members of the public here that would like to speak. I think it is a public hearing, your name and your address and then whatever comments you want to make about the plans.
Make it up. My name is Christopher Tapna, I'm a resident on.
Yeah, we want to catch you up.
Oh, goodness. Forty-one Little Ray Bryant in the village. And she wants to say I'm a member of the zoning board of appeals. I'm a little concerned about the proposed development because as I read the historic, just overlay, preamble and various paragraphs, the site is meant to be looked at as carefully as the building. And one thing that I see immediately is that the view from the street is altered by the presence of buildings that stop the through view that was very characteristic of these houses along this street. So I see that you have, you asked to provide, offer special attention to any treatment of the house in the site needs, and this is maybe to do that. On the zoning board of appeals, we've had several issues with the construction of pools recently. And I don't think here there's any problem in finding room for the pool, but I just ask you to keep in the back of your mind that proving pools in the village when it comes to smaller lots becomes very problematic and consistently requests for variances which affect the distance of structures from neighboring properties. And it's hard if you go here where it's probably as a right to figure out how is this going to impact the village as a whole, but I think you should keep that in mind. And the last thing I wanted to raise, two things. When I saw the lot coverage, isn't that structure in the back two stories? And does the upper story have to count for that in this case or not? They only put in for a single story for that big structure at the back, as far as I can see today.
Well, there is a, is it pavilion that, because of water slide that's coming down?
No.
That's gone.
The existing structure.
That's removed.
You're right, we only accounted for the first floor of that, so I'd rather recover.
Probably double, right? The last thing, it's not clear from what's posted publicly because the architect is representing the owner, just who the owner is. Is it a private individual who's living there or not? Because it occurs to me that once this is all done, if it's now a private house, perhaps it would be more attractive to make it a bed and breakfast and a pool and all that. And approving a pool for private use, it's very different for a really, from approving.
If you have a pool at a bed and breakfast or a local family, I think you have to have board help come in and inspect the pool and check it. It's not, a private pool doesn't have very many regulations in it. But if you were to have a pool, you had a bed and breakfast across the library, I was thinking about putting a pool in, and it's a lot of work because you have to have them come by and inspect it because it's open in a sense to the public, it's not your family. If there's not enough chlorine for your family, that's okay, it's your responsibility for them. But the public, you know, so yes, but this is a one family, it doesn't.
It is, it's hard to tell from what's posted publicly.
It's a very large building, but it is a one family.
I have no intention of selling it.
But one thing that I know from living next door to some of you has a pool, they create a lot of noise, it's not the pump, it's the kids.
Yes.
Okay, and it's fine in small doses, but potentially it would be, I'm sure, an activation of this stuff. It's very different if it's private pool used occasionally. If that's difficult to change, good. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would go, if your name is addressed?
Sir, hi. My name is Judy Schmeyer and I'm a resident at Six Plata behind Dan's property. Yeah, for twenty-four years I've been living there. And I've been the village. I want to, first of all, I want to thank Dan because good neighbors is always important. And Dan came and introduced himself to me and wanted to talk to me about the pool and ask my concerns and we talked about things and we figured out what we agreed on and what our differences were. And so I really appreciate that, thank you. I do want to correct one misstatement last meeting. I believe it was the architect that was up here and someone asked about the, the noise issue with the equipment and the house behind, property behind. And he said, well, it's going to be a lot of noise. And one of you mentioned that it could be moved. And he said, yeah, if we moved it over, there's nothing back there. It's my property. That's a lot, means a lot to me. And so it was, I wanted very clear that it is not nothing back there. And you all haven't made it sound like that, but it was just something that hurt.
Oh, and you're about right there. Even though the pool would be used for probably three or four months, there's a hot tub. And I would, is it your intention to have the hot tub for year round use?
I'm not sure the thoughts of actually it will operate year round.
I have, so yeah, the house is my only home and it's my investment, the only big investment I have. So I'm, I'm really concerned about how things will affect my living there and also the value of the home if I ever were to have to sell it. Not that I have any intentions, but I do have four primary concerns. One is the noise level. We talked about the pool pumps and pool equipment being near my property. And it's right there. And that's right as you walk out my house. And if you're hanging out in the back end there or even anywhere there, you've got the pool noise. Now, I know they're saying six decibels, that doesn't mean much to me. I don't know what six decibels is.
Sixty-five.
Or sixty-five decibels, okay. I think I like six now, Ben. But yeah, I have no idea what sixty-five decibels is.
The lowest threshold, I believe, in the village thing is seventy-five. If you start to go above seventy-five, there's problems. But if you're under seventy-five, there's no law.
Sixty-five decibels is, if you, it's, it's like a, it's a voice, it's a conversation and it's comparable to the air, oh, if you have an air conditioning compressor.
No, and that's a big noise.
Okay, okay.
Yes, the neighbors have one.
I was at the last meeting, but was there a discussion about moving the?
There was. We explored that with the pool company, with the pool designer, the landscapers, the architect, and we found that it was not practical in terms of either mitigating the noise or having it be efficient for the pool. And it's not going to be covered, it's not going to be covered because it requires airflow. It can't be covered, technically put indoors, it requires a significant amount of airflow. Fence around it will allow for airflow, so the fence will be two sides. And the bushes, the kind of things, and the second fence will mitigate the noise. And it also, it's, you know, it's fifteen feet roughly to the property line for the equipment. And then another, you know, fifteen feet to your house. Fifteen feet to the property line also is a attenuator of the noise.
Is there some sound battling equipment that could be attached to the fence, some absorption?
They, they make panels that go, that could be, you know, they make panels for this purpose that can be purchased and installed, you know, simply to fences and railings to. In my, in my experience, even in Manhattan, we had to deal with them on a rooftop for an air handler, for large residents, the neighbors in the neighboring building. It was, it was, it was a real problem. And so we had these panels that were installed on the railing around the roof, around the equipment, and they, they attenuated the noise quite well. I think, you know, this is something, I think that's, I'm not sure how the board would want to handle this, but I think that obviously we want, Dave wants to have a happy neighbor in all of this. And I, I think, and having not spoken to him about this until. And I, I think, and having not spoken to him about this until, second, I'm offering up that there's a real possibility that if this became a real noise problem for you, that these pumps are deafening to you because you, you don't want to hear that, then maybe there's, you know, can, can it be a conversation to say, hey, Dave, listen, I'm tired of hearing your pumps in my backyard out the window of my house, you know, can we do something? And is that something that's, I, I feel pretty confident that what we're proposing is going to remediate the noise from your house, but, you know, what I feel is one thing, what you feel is something else, may not be the same. And, you know, is there a way that this is something that can be left as, if there's a problem, this conversation, and we come up with something to try to satisfy you with that noise issue? I'm not sure how the board, you know.
I have other ideas.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Why don't you, Judy, go through her.
We're going to.
So another option, well, first of all, I know we've had incidences here in the town or in the village, probably both, where we think we're getting something, and then we get something totally different, and by then it's too late. So I just, I'm bringing these up now because I don't want to lose the peacefulness of the neighborhood because it was different than what I thought or expected. So I know the village has dealt with this before, and so I just wanted to bring that up. Another option, and I just throw this out here, would be to situate it on the other side of the pool closer, towards the west fence, Haven fence, towards the main house. Because if they're putting, you know, wrapping it around and, and it's not noise, then it, and so as long as they don't have to look at it, it's, it could easily go, turn it down that way and still be outside. But I just don't want to have it come up and then be like, oh, this wasn't what we thought. The other concerns is that, is the view shed. And again, I'm just bringing up concerns, they might, you know, I think some has already been discussed, but the view shed, I came in from a rural area where it had beautiful views, I came into the village, I'm like, am I really ready for village life? And then I realized how spectacular it is to look out over all the historic homes. And so I just don't want to, again, I can't get a perspective whether the, whatever that thing's called over there with the fireplace, whether that will ruin the view, I don't know. I can't really conceptualize it. So, and I think the other one is lower, although when we talk about me, the land behind, when I go into my house, I'm up a little bit. So while I can't see over the fence when I'm outside, if I'm in the house, I, I can't see down, but I can see a lot more.
Your house two stories?
The house, no, my house is one story.
And, and right now, are you, is the one you're talking, your concern right now, the covered at the end of the pool?
Both, because I, I don't know where the other one is in the view shed. Yes, it has some trees there, but.
The fireplace is in this building?
Yeah.
There it is.
The building in the back in the same word is lower than the, you know, you're not, you won't see that.
Even if I'm up higher?
Not in your house, if you're, you know, if you're on your room, if you're, if you're off, there was, I don't think.
What is the, oh, what is the height of the building by the pool equipment?
Six foot three.
Six foot three.
Taller than that?
Taller than six, right? It is, it is.
This is two oh one. Two oh three gives you a line on the existing car house. This is two.
The.
This sheet might help, two oh three, okay.
The other issue, which I think was dealt with, but I just want to emphasize it, is wood fencing. Vital fencing is not historic. And my house is now in the historic register, and I really believe in keeping it, keeping the charm in the village. And I don't necessarily think vinyl keeps charm.
That was changed this year in the latest proposal, right?
Yes, I, that's what I thought. Yeah, I just mentioned.
I don't think it allows me to start this term.
Okay. And then the other thing that, you know, again, I have talked with Dan, none of this is a surprise to him, but I am concerned about lighting. And because it's rel, it used to be very dark, which was wonderful. Now we've got more lights around, do have a blaring light down the road that just blares into the windows. But I don't know what kind of lighting they're going to have, and, you know, if they have, you know, I, I don't, Dan doesn't say, Dan says they're not real big partiers. I mean, of course you can have a party, that's not the deal, but if it's like every night, big parties and big cool parties, that's going to really impact if it goes into the evening, not only do I have the noise, but I also have the lighting. So I just want to make sure that you all look into that as you're making a ruling on this.
Do we have a lighting plan?
I think you specified that there would be lighting inside the pavilion.
In the recessed lights up into the ceiling of that, as well as the lower structure.
Right.
Same thing.
Downward.
Yes.
Point.
Yes. Everything, any, any lights would be dark sky compliant. You know, we're not, there's no area lights, we're not proposing floodlights to light the whole backyard. There's going to be lights within the pool as I think underwater lights in the pool as well, but there's not, there's no proposal for to light it for backyard, you know, that's not the goal.
So that's, that's it. I really am happy to have Dan and Dave as my neighbors, and, you know, I, I know that they want to enjoy their property. And I just want to do it so that we can both enjoy our properties. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Are there any other members?
First of all, I could just ask a question. I'm not familiar with pool shading structures. I'm not quite sure what that is, especially since it, as you show there, it really doesn't shade the pool.
It's, it's, you can swim underneath this, it's, it's a roof that you can get out of the sun but still be in the pool. So it's, you know, you're able to.
But it's in the northeast corner of the pool, so hardly shades the pool in.
Get out of the direct light during, in the middle of the day. There'll be parts, times of the day where you can get into that to get out of.
And I just might want to add, it would be nice if we could get a perspective like we got from Haven as to what, you know, I, I understand what everybody's saying, but it would still be nice to get a perspective from someone with pic photo that's with that
If you give us permission. If that's a flat roof, is it?
There's a gate there.
What's the finish on that roof?
The, of the, the, the structure in the back corner?
Yeah.
It's going to be a rubber roof that will have wooden slats on top of it so that, from the second floor, anyone's windows are not looking at a rubber EPDM roof structure that is sort of unsightly. So it'll have a wooden, I'm very carefully calling it a deck structure because it's not a deck, it's not to be used, there's no access to this structure, but it's to make it not, to disguise it from looking like a flat rooftop in Brooklyn.
It drains somewhere.
It'll, it's got a very slight pitch, it'll run off the backside of it to a gutter.
Do we have comments from the board? My question is, the, the pump in the back corner there, the neighbor has said, can we move it over to the northern center or edge? And that would be a budding Haven spot parking lot, which is a commercial building as opposed to being very close to residential. I would almost prefer that I get one dollar like the neighbor asked for because it would be less. You know, if it were there, the, the structure would shelter more, you know, abate more of the noise coming over the fence. Why can't the pump house be over there?
There is a, there is an aesthetic issue with that as well. It's not, where the pump is being proposed, where the equipment is being proposed right now, would be hidden from view from my property, from the house and from the pool. It would also be hidden from view from Judy's property. And we're making, you know, extra effort to make sure that the noise mitigation is accommodated with any fresh fencing and more plantings and the new six-foot-high fence. Moving it to the left of the, that structure means that it's right up against, it has to be right up against the pool, and so it would be logical, it would be horizontal along the face of the pool, which, you know, there's only, it has to be within the setback of the property, so it has to be in that, that little area. And it's very, very hard to hide that from the pool, so it'd be visible as a, as a mechanical object from the pool and from the house and from the driveway, and, and that's not ideal for us either. And certainly you wouldn't design a pool that way if you were, if you're doing it.
You mentioned that there are things called sound dampening panels. Can you put, can't you, can't you line the four-foot-high enclosure with sound dampening panels? That wouldn't, that wouldn't inhibit airflow, but it would, and you've got, you've got four-foot fence here.
Correct.
Followed by a six-foot fence, right?
Correct.
And you have the sound dampening panels surrounding the equipment here.
I mean, I suppose, I, I think in my mind, thinking of budgets of everything, is, you know, is there a world where, you know, I, I don't think anyone's objecting to doing that. I think it's just the possibility that this is not an issue, that when it's, we don't know how, until someone can hear it, until you can hear it, until everybody can hear it, we don't know. I, I don't want to volunteer necessarily to go, these panels are something that's custom-made per application, you don't go to Lowe's or anywhere and pick these things up. So I don't want to volunteer if it's something that's not going to be necessary because of the other means with the sort of fence, the, the hedges, the landscaping, and then the secondary fence on the property line. If that's all going to satisfy the concern of the neighbor, then, you know, I, I don't think anyone's saying that, no, too bad, we're not going to do that, and if she's unhappy, she's unhappy.
Well, we could put a condition on the site plan that if the neighbor.
If this becomes an issue.
It becomes an issue with the neighbor, you would have to put sound, sorted equipment.
We would have to address that at that point, just have.
How high are the pool pumps in relation to?
Forty-two inches, I think, I think there's a vertical one that's about forty-two inches tall, so everything should be below the four-foot-high fence, and then the landscaping, and then the bigger fence in the back.
Doesn't noise rise?
Yes.
So then it doesn't matter how many fences, it's going to rise, and my house is right there. I mean, it's just a few feet away from the fence.
It does attenuate through the air.
I'm sorry?
It does attenuate through the air. And it's, if it's sixty-five decibels next to the pump, ten feet away, it's a lot less than sixty-five decibels.
Yeah, I, again, I don't know, but I'm just afraid of it coming in and me having to ask them to do me a favor, which.
It would be, you know, it would be required.
Put in the site plan.
All you have to do is write us a letter.
If you heard the noise you've been violating, you could call Ryan and say, I have a problem. Can you please enforce the clause in the site plan? I have, I have asked the building department, so enforcement has asked them to put sound attenuating.
Yeah, this would be in support of you. One of the concerns you, you listed.
Yeah.
Was a concern that sometimes what you get is different than what was advertised.
Yes.
Right? So this would be a case where if what you get is more noise than you can deal with, we could have this condition that says that that, you have to have a solution, and, and sound dampening panels or, you know, would have to be dealt with. I do, I do understand that if you tried to put this here, you would have, you have probably a four-foot-high fence along the edge of the pool.
So there's a stone wall around that shade structure.
Yes.
So from the hole, you will see, and all the pump equipment will, any noise will theoretically rise up, it won't go.
That's the same theory as the fence, though, that's around it, the two fences, that it's going to hit the fence and hit up.
Right, it'll dissipate and any noise will repuff that over towards her house or over towards the pool. That's the theory, right?
Correct, correct.
So by that thinking, it almost sounds like the planning board is asking for a rendering of what it would look like with the pool equipment there.
In the, the second location.
At the second location with either fencing around it or stone around it. Right, John?
Well, I think they have a pretty good argument that that's not where you would want the pool. Equipment is right next to the pool, in what it, hidden behind something.
I think what, what the planning board or, you know, the neighbors asking for is the rendering to see what she's going to be seeing to her property over the, you know, beyond the fence. I think you would ask for that, and I think we can certainly accommodate that to make that.
But I think you're talking about something different.
I think in that, yeah, I don't know if we're mixing the.
Well, one of, one of the things you were concerned with was the view shed, as you described it.
Yes.
And in that regard, the, the covering over the pool is right about the same height as the fence.
Right.
And they have agreed to put these decorative slats on to make it look like, if you were looking from above, which you won't be. But if you were looking from above.
I'll be looking down at it because I can see over the fence a bit.
Right.
So if it's the same height as the fence.
From a window of your house?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, but you don't have a second story?
But I do not have.
So, so if you did a line of sight rendition, it should be from the windows, I would presume, of your house, because that's, that's what you'll see most of the time, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's where, that's where I think that would most.
And that would show, you know, one of your concerns is how, you know, how, how will this present in the view shed that may have a chimney up to sixteen feet high? The peak will be fourteen feet high. Your house is right here.
Yeah.
Right at that corner.
Yeah, right at the corner.
Yeah.
The back door is just a little bit, right at the corner.
I remember there are plantings that are planned for that back, the entire back corner, wrapping the fence that will exceed the height of the fence, not significantly, but it will be hard to see, especially the closer building from, from Jane's property. She will probably see the pavilion or the top.
Yeah, so this is your, this is your house, correct?
Yes.
Right, so you'd have a line of sight to the, here. You would have to be, I think to see the top of this, you'd have to be standing here peeking over the fence, but.
No, actually, I, from the kitchen windows and the kitchen there, it, you can see right that way.
Okay, so line of sight to here.
Yeah, and also back.
Uh-huh, okay.
But remember, you don't plant things here today.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It's nothing, it's just a fence, it's definitely a fence.
Describe the planning, so they, six feet high, eight feet high?
They're proposed as arborvitaries right now. We, we probably will not do arborvitaries because I'm not a fan, but the idea of having something that's, that will grow taller than the fence, but I don't think we'll start with anything greater than six feet or so.
Yeah, but those are fast-growing and you'll grow up to more than ten feet high?
Well, I don't want to feel fenced in either, I mean, you know.
You can't have it both ways.
I know. That's the problem.
They have the right to do landscaping on their side of the fence.
No, I know, I know.
There's a sheet I think might be helpful, which is A203. If we bring that up, it, it might help you understand a little bit more in terms of what the heights are here. I think it's, it'd be the set fire, yeah, the one tab. Yeah, that one. This, this was helpful to me as I looked at the perspective against the carriage house that exists today.
Yeah.
So you can see where some of these roof lines pop out and get it down. But I, I sort of felt this was useful in that. If this is our existing structure, which you see today, and you're familiar with the roof line, it gives you a sense of where the pavilion tops out, where the chimney tops out in relation to it. And then this is the structure, which is closest to you, which is the swim under the pool covering in perspective.
Wait, where's the, where's, I'm getting confused.
This is the structure.
Oh, in the back there. Okay.
So here's the six-foot fence.
Oh, so that roof won't go that high.
Now, the one close to you is, you're going to have, I think you're going to have to try, I mean, maybe from inside your house, but from outside in your yard.
It doesn't have a
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay. That's what I misunderstood. I know that, and that I think will not be a problem.
This is the six-foot fence here?
Correct.
So the roof line of this is maybe a few inches above the six-foot one.
Yeah.
Just taller.
I, I just misunderstood when I heard the roof.
Because the taller building is closer to their house.
Yes, yes. And that looks, it looks like it done a nice job with it too.
Christopher. Come quite told from the drawings. Does the pool shading structure have any walls at all? Was it
There are two walls. There's two solid walls into that back corner.
And what do they nail?
Well, they're going to be built out of CMU and then faced with stone on the outside and tile at least on the inside.
Okay. In relation to the conversation on sound, then that will push the sound back the other way towards the neighbors' property.
It'll push it back towards the main house.
No, the, the sound of the, the air conditioning, the pumping of equipment
Oh, oh, sorry.
Will reflect immediately off the stone.
Yeah. It'll take me a while for it back towards the fence.
Yes.
So even with that, as, now if we're going to, if this is, you know, to, to, we can make an accommodation to not put stone on that back wall. I mean, we can put a lattice or something on it and have, could come up with another way so it's not such a hard surface on the backside where it's going to be fenced in anyhow.
Right. But you still have this, in other words, this is the back wall.
Correct.
Right. You still have this four-foot-high solid fence.
It's only a two-sided fence.
It's a two-sided fence. It's an L. It comes off the back corner and then heads across. So if you went back to the plan.
It doesn't face the stone wall part.
So it actually comes, there's the two circles on the plan, which are, you know, representation of the pumps.
Yeah.
Right? And then, so to the left, where the, the heavy dark line meets
This is a column in the pool.
Correct.
So the fence is there.
The fence goes from there down.
Yeah, okay.
So it's two sides of a fence.
Well, having a soft surface on that side probably would help. Even if you just grow ivy on the wall.
You can't see it, so it shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't
Sure. And it's probably
You can't see that side of the pavilion anyway. That way you'd have the sound absorption from the stone further along getting to her.
Michael is right. That's our, our noise law doesn't reggae anything, regulate anything below seventy decibels. So sixty-five, if indeed you can believe the manufacturer, is tolerable noise in the village, according to the code. But I do think the idea, I, I don't spend a lot of time around pools, but I have seen them where they start up and turn off. They make more noise when they first come on, and then they hung, you know? But you get that sort of barry noise at the beginning, especially when they get old and a little corrosive. So, you know, I think the extra accommodation in terms of fencing and plants that go above ten feet would be helpful. And I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't put a condition if there's a continuing problem or if they can
Yeah.
prove that the decibels above seventy at any time, that we could enforce additional baffles or acoustic materials around the fencing.
You just mentioned some height of suggested landscaping.
Yes.
Ten feet?
I'd say ten feet minimum.
Okay. So this, this row, there's basically a L-shaped row of arborvitae here, is that correct?
Or something, or something similar instead of an arborvitae.
Yes. Not bamboo.
It says here bamboo planting or holly.
Yeah, holly's okay, but bamboo is really basic. It'll end up on your backyard.
Yeah. Maybe it's lined up there.
I think I even mentioned it, Dan. So I obviously didn't know what I was talking about.
Yes, it's certainly
Yeah. If there's bamboo planted there, your house will be engulfed in it in a few years.
Christopher.
Going back to what I said about impact on the site, they, they just overlay guidelines do suggest that everything, that new structures should be very compatible with the original character of the place. And in that respect, perhaps it makes sense to try and hide as much of this as we can. Have you considered possibly moving the pool shading thing south? Will it provide more shade and would move the equipment further away from your neighbor?
To her house? We've been through a design change since, I don't know, seventy-five times.
And it'd be more hidden by their first structure, you know, with the view of the site from the street.
You won't see it from the street?
Hmm?
You won't see it from the street?
You won't see it from the street.
Because there's a fence along the north side of the house.
Well, that's an intrusion in itself.
Fencing is not considered an intrusion, especially if it's not in the front yard.
The view sheds that they, they gave were very helpful. We used view sheds for the hospital and it showed what the impact would be. People were saying that, hey, the Mirabu Spa was going to be a massive three-story building that would destroy the whole village. And their view sheds proved, and it actually turned out, you can't see it from almost anywhere unless you're standing in the driveway and looking at the spa. So, you know, view sheds do work. And, you know, what they showed is what you, what you will see when it's erected.
To Chris's point, though, I do want to go back to one thing with respect to the back wall of the pool structure. And that's, you know, I appreciate how much this plan has changed since you first came in. And one of the big things that I think improved was, we talked about a lot of synthetic materials in the earlier drafts, and the applicants moved in the direction of actual blue stone and not cultured stone, and taking some views from the main house and the carriage house and putting that into the plan. So, you know, I'm worried we're throwing the baby out with the backwater or the backside of the structure that's adjacent to the pool equipment here. I think the stone is a very nice feature. It's, you know, gives it a bit more authenticity to have both sides of the wall be made of stone. So I was just going to make the suggestion with respect to that, that before we commit to lattice or something else on the backside, we'll have a CMU box and likely the equipment more than far off. If we can figure out this decibel question before deciding whether or not to put stone on the back or to do something a little more sound-absorbing, or if we do something sound-absorbing to keep the stone. Because I do think, even from the neighboring property, to look at something stone rather than a CMU with some lattice over it might be a little bit more visually appealing and just more in keeping with the history of the property. So I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're solving, we're trying to prevent a sound issue that could be a nuisance, but we're not altering something that was part of this plan that I thought was a nice feature to have, something that reads like an authentic stone structure.
But nobody will see that stone wall. They won't see it. The neighbor won't
The fence will certainly help it not be seen, but interesting in terms of, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years down the road, you know, who knows what happens with fences and pools? I mean, maybe it's a good point. Maybe you won't actually see it. But I did have some questions, and it came up last time.
Can I just, can I just offer a suggestion, which is, just as we have contingency for, or a contingency for adding baffles, we can only, also have contingency to add trellis or whatever to the face of the stone if the stone is not, if it's not solid.
I think the goal becomes that as there's this condition, perhaps, that will be an approval of if the noise becomes an issue. And, you know, so I think the, the solution will be, we need to do something to make it, whether it's baffles, whether it's lattice, whether it's something. I think the goal, I think of that condition will be to, we need to get the noise level down. However we achieve that goal, however we achieve that modification, because maybe it'll be two things that will need to happen, maybe more than, you know, that'll need to happen to get the sound down to the appropriate level. If we're being sold one thing from the pool company at sixty-five and it shows up and it's ninety-five, you know, we need to do many factors. We'll have to try many things to get the noise down. And that's, you know, so whether it's lattice, whether it's baffle material, whatever it is, pillows, whatever it is, we're going to have to address that noise for the purposes intended and then not impact the visual
Right, right.
That, right? We don't want sound baffling materials sticking out beyond the center fence or something like that. The question that I wanted to get to was, I'm having a hard time picturing the topography of the site. So one of the things we talked about last time was, and you did address and put a lot of things on the plans that were brought up, but there were, there were two specific points. And one was how the drainage is going to work here, thinking of overland flow of water, right? We know that swimming pools don't like water directed at them. So there's going to be a situation where water has to move away from the swimming pool, which means that it's moving towards neighbor properties and it's moving towards existing structures on the site. So I'd like to just understand a little bit more with respect to that. And then also, we talked about how the soil would be managed during construction, how we're going to deal with a large volume of soil. You suggested how it might be last time, but weren't sure. Might have to worry about that too.
So, I'll, let me address that. Your second question first, and then we'll move to the first topic. The sequence of events basically will happen is the, when the excavation happens for the pool, we have leading of the pool company, the, they're going to have an excavator on site. It's not the biggest excavator, but it's not a mini either. It's a, it's an excavator. And they're going to have two dump trucks, which are going to run one at a time. And so they'll back one dump truck all the way in. Everything that comes out of the hole goes in back of a truck and leaves. Nothing is going to be stockpiled on site. We're not going to have piles of dirt that we need to worry about. Still fencing containing it from running out to neighboring properties or out to the street. So everything comes out of the ground, goes in a dump truck, leaves the property, goes somewhere they're taking it. That process probably takes two to three days. That's what they're budgeting. That's what they're telling me, two to three days. That's sort of weather-dependent. You know, if we get into a nasty spring, summer when this happens, you know, it could be another day or more partial days instead of full days. After that, we go into the rebar. The rebar shows up. The, the crew comes to do that. So there's some more hand tool type noise, saws. There's going to be hammers, but it's going to be quieter. It's going to be less of a disruption to neighbors from that. Plumbing, electricians, all these sort of subsurface utilities happen. After that's all done, the gunite crew shows up. And that's a day, that's, that's a, that's a full day of the process, the gunite process, which is, which has noise associated with its compressors. It's, it's
They're spraying the rebar over the pool.
They spray the rebar. They shape it as it's, as it's
The gunite.
You know, there's an army of people in the pool, and it's just a mess.
I'm spraying it all down.
That's right. After that, that's really the end of like the, the big noise. The excavation and the gunite are the big noise processes. The gunite sits for twenty-eight days to cure. After that, the, the plaster and the tile show up. And that's, you know, sort of standard construction noise again, as we saw, sammers, drills. Somewhere in that process, backfill happens. So the, the hole is overdug. When they do the excavation, they have to backfill it. So it's crushed stone that gets put around. So to get into your second question, after having a conversation with the pool company, they're confident, and I think I agree, that the, the amount of impervious surface that we're creating here, which although it's, it's pavers around the pool, it's not paved. So there's going to be some seepage, not a ton of it, a lot, you know, there's going to be some sheeting over the top of that. But there's going to be, there's going to be a foot of material below that, below those pavers, which should be pervious enough to handle the, the amount of runoff that's going to be coming out of this, preventing it from leaving our property, going to neighbors' properties or out of the street.
I think my question, and what you just addressed is, is lot coverage, and you're below the, the maximum allowable lot coverage. I know a question came up about it before, but the first floor areas are what count in that calculation. And you, even in the built-out condition, you are fine in terms of lot coverage. I think where I'm asking the question is, you know, the property appears to have a bit of a bowl effect as, and I've always seen this from the adjacent, essentially the Haven parking lot, so it's difficult for me to know for sure. But it looks like there's a slight drop into the edges of the property, if I'm not mistaken, at least from the outside fence.
There's a little degree.
Right.
Especially on the top, this degree. Just kind of drops towards the Haven property on the north side.
It, it looked to me like it sort of balled in here, right?
It actually goes the other way.
The other way.
The other way. And it's the other way on the other side of the property as well. So the property is, is pretty flat, except that it does grade down on both the north and the south sides. And then there's a section of lawn in the middle that also has some depression. It used to be apparently a parking lot for the doctor's office in that, in the middle of the yard.
So then that's, so that's the, the shape of the line today. I guess the question is just, you know, where is pool set? You know, what elevation is pool set at? Are we, are we raising elevation two feet or a foot from existing to set the pool? Is it going to be set at current zero?
I mean, I'm going to, I, I would tell you that we're, we're talking inches above zero right now, above what's, you know, we're going to find the high point in the backyard and be inches, you know, and we don't want, not building up a foot. We don't want to get into that. That turns into a real mound in the backyard, which makes, to her view, a bigger concern because now we're raising everything up higher. So no, we're not, we don't want to raise this up. We're going to keep this down like grades, as close as grades we can.
Have you addressed the water? I mean, you're now taking, the thunderstone would come and go into the ground. Now we have the pool and two structures. Where's the water going to go?
The pool catches the water that lands in the pool, right? And so we're dealing with the, really, we're dealing with the patio, the hardscape around the pool for the concern of where is that water going? And, you know, from very precursory conversations, I think we're going to manage all this on-site with, with the backfill, the crushed stone backfill we have underneath everything around the pool and underneath the patio, the, the material that's brought in from the sand to level the hardscape.
So the outside of the pool, that this will be a dry well, that will just, you know?
I don't want to call it a dry well because
Something like
But I, I think, but I think, I, I don't think we're creating anything that's going to be sending tons of water, any water. I don't want to say tons of water because that's not fair to say either. I don't think we're going to be creating a, a runoff issue to neighbors' properties.
Could you put in a swell where those plantings are? So that anything that does
We could, we could create a depression.
Slap off, goes into that area and waters the plants rather than goes anywhere.
Absolutely.
I think that's reason, absolutely reasonable. Yeah, I think that would, that would give us a little bit more security.
We can run that all the way down the hole, you know, the side behind the pavilion as well. We could run that, basically the entire, the L shape of the entire project. We can grade it in a way that we're going to ensure that we're containing our storm wall.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful, especially just absent, you know, we've got elevations on this plan.
Sure.
Some security that
Just put a note on the planner.
Yeah.
Basic spot elevations.
I think the, the pool probably would allow some of that too.
I want to, the previous meeting, how does, does Boyd feel that the questions that were asked at the time have been answered? You guys?
I think you wanted us to add a note to the plan about following the, the political pool codes and building code requirements, you know, for swimming pools. And that's been added too. So that's a, I think it's on that table one on the bottom left-hand corner. The cedar fence that was brought up last time, because we have this ether lures, and now it's cedar fence. We got away from manufactured stone, so it's a, a real stone veneer. The continuing conversation of the sound and the equipment. I think those are the comments that we have.
Those cover the ones that I had right at the beginning.
The septic you have on there.
We indicated the septic on the plan correct.
This circled item in your material.
So that's 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 the old vinyl so that's no longer I think we submitted okay.
That was still in the supplemental so I we just wanna take that out of the packet.
Absolutely this was this was submitted I think to Ryan last when we brought him the.
Our copy.
Okay.
Okay.
Just had the cedar nuts.
And maybe just one other answer David to your question wasn't the last meeting but the original plan the first plan we saw called real large occupiable deck with the stairs leading up the back.
To a slide.
And a gigantic you know adult size you know water park slide here all of which was removed and and we confirmed in the last meeting that the roof of this shading area will never be occupied.
There's no access.
That we know access to no stairs to it it won't become a party deck so people won't be up there and it will have slats on it to make it look a little narrow.
The wooden surface stuff we put over that is just really to hide the unsightliness of the rubber roof that will be in there.
Might be worth putting a note on the plan as a matter of fact.
Right.
That the roof on the yeah it's not accessible and to be used as a deck. Do you wanna close the public hearing or at least ask if there's any further comment?
I was just gonna say I have a photo of my view of the property if anybody wants to see it.
Yeah.
And this is actually the part of the.
Flashing this with the photo. You know mine flashing this with the photo.
Yeah.
So you probably will see the roof of the pavilion.
Now this is on the ground so you know I'll see when when I'm in the house I can actually see the full windows that you see it filed in there I can't see in but I see the full windows so but I also have beautiful view and if that is as beautiful as the house then things that are ten feet more will I'll lose that view of the shed.
The existing fence is that yours?
Yes.
And that's coming down as part of this?
Oh yeah.
It's falling down?
Yeah it's yeah it's it's already started it's anxious to have the new one come in in fact I said that if it was wood you know eventually I want to refence the whole end which goes behind Haven too and so I'll just use the same fence so we have continuity so this is.
Oh yeah. So my guess is you'll see the top of the pavilion of the chimney.
And where was this photo taken from?
This is taken just outside my kitchen door the back door.
Okay so we're in from the backyard looking towards.
Their house yeah it's just a few meters from the house. Yeah it's a pretty pissed up.
Yeah. You choose a bad picture.
Can you email that?
Sure.
To the office.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does the board feel comfortable?
Have it on our hand.
Other hand.
Yes Christopher. What was my last question? I'm sort of kind of dubious about the front fence there that showed coming up like you know from the house.
You're talking about the front view of the house?
Where your rear yard starts and where the front yard stops.
This are you talking about this?
Right behind your head. No the go back to the site plan please. There's a dark black line going north from the house I presume it is the same fences goes along the side and it's not of the property. Okay but that's a view from the street generally we ask for fences that are on the street to have certain amount of openness to them. Perhaps your garden uses rear yard fence but I look today trying to.
Rules are that anything in front of the front of the front plane of the house can be four feet high once you cross the front plane of the house fences can't be six feet high along the sides and there are many places that have fences that come along sides of the house and close off the entire backyard.
And they're typically on cornrows.
Yeah and on over lots will have fences as long as it's past the front plane of the house it can be six feet high.
I think in that particular HSO period that would look pretty strange.
I complimented sort of the same thing because there's a there's a proposal to do an aluminum fence right?
Not anymore.
Oh not anymore it's all just cedar.
Inside oh I'm sorry inside along the driveway along the driveway there's aluminum jarret style fence.
Right.
With the requirements for the swinging gates for access for the pool code to yes and so that heads back along the driveway with landscaping in front of it around the corner up.
Yep. And then where my thought process took me was that because the swimming pool would be behind the fence I'd sort of preferred the cedar fence giving the privacy from the road so that you know you don't know there's a pool back there quite as much so the compromise in my mind was in this case I prefer the cedar fence to to shield the public from the view of the pool that might potentially result.
And you know personally I'm not a huge fan of of fence cutting across the front so the idea was to put plantings and planting beds to try to minimize the view of the fence from the street.
There's a lot shown there.
Yeah this suggestion.
And this actually this house is pretty far back from the street.
Yeah.
So that fence is not gonna be dominant to the street.
And there's a hedge along the sidewalk there's a rabbit hole hedge along the sidewalk and off the side yard.
Do you want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All seconded. Folks in favor? Okay how does the board feel about proceeding all of our questions yet been answered are all of the comments that we lost conditions put on the plan clear or would you like to wait for more information or plans that show all the details that we talked about today?
The only other thing I think we talked about was having a line of site rendition.
For yes.
Like from the neighbors you know house.
So why don't we do that we ask for the if Judy's okay with having a picture taken from the back porch.
Yeah.
Elevation and you could give that to them.
Do you wanna take the picture and I can give you my email address or do you want I can take whatever's easiest.
Sure would it be better to take it from inside the house where it's a little higher or?
I think the porch you have steps coming down at the back door?
Not much no one step I could take it from the step if I can yeah.
Yeah.
Yes that's I guess what I would do from the doorway I was thinking yes.
If you want to come onto the property.
I can come by and meet you and you can point me to where you want to take a photo from and that way is that all right?
Yeah yeah.
And then you could you'll have the opportunity to put all the notes on the plan that we talked about.
Oh hundred percent.
Including the idea of a if noise is a problem that you can look first.
Who's wanting to put that note on us or is that just getting rid of the agreement here?
That'll written in the condition of the site plan.
Yeah but I think having you know.
Putting it on this banner put it on there too.
Yeah yeah it would be good because then the site plan will be the official record that people may look back on years from now along with the other item John mentioned there would be you suggested that there would be pretty much an L an answer to Darren's question about drainage kind of an L-shaped rail to ensure that nothing starts draining back into the neighbors which would be good to note on.
And that the trees will be about ten feet high?
Do you wanna get your wording for this cut?
At maturity.
What?
At maturity yeah.
Fine then. Would you like to give me the wording for the note about the condition you have you know is there specific wording that the planning board wants me to use for that or? I don't wanna write the wrong thing here.
We've come up with something I'm sure but maybe not for the moment.
Okay okay or is that something that you could get to Ryan or Ryan could give me or?
Yeah we'll pass.
How do you wanna handle that I guess is the question.
We could write something I'll pass it around and then get it to Ryan and we'll have the official.
Okay.
I'm happy to start that thread.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question from John? Am I allowed to? Okay because we're not.
It's okay.
When you I'm just wondering if you know like Dan and I will be talking in the future about things and how things are going and I was just wondering if if we both kind of decided that we don't need it to be ten feet high so I can still see the house and the vista is that possible if it's under if they we go under ten you know?
You can say what's your preference and I'm sure they'd weigh it by.
Yeah yeah I mean that we've talked about talking about it.
All right something closer to sixty-eight feet.
Yeah or yeah whatever.
So you don't lose the sunset but you don't see the pavilion.
Well now that they've got that nice top part it might not be too bad.
Okay so we'll see you at the next meeting and hopefully everybody will be back in with the final out of the plan.
April fourth.
Right the village election at the twenty-first we can't leave that.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-first should be our regular next scheduled meeting is the village election and there'll be voting booths in here so we actually cannot leave that we'll be meeting on first Tuesday in April.
Okay.
Okay.
We will get that written to you before that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was.
Close the.
Yes. With the draft letter to the town to listen that from the town board about people protesting for Locust Hill and our interest in being part of that process. Did we get a clean copy I got a copy that was half black and half red.
That's what we got.
Sure what?
I should have sent you a clean one too.
I thought I did send a clean one David.
I didn't.
Maybe it was the second piece uh did not fall.
I might have missed it I just thought it was red one.
What I got here is draft three current draft. But anyway it's not that electric it's a pretty short.
We you know we're concerned about traffic I was I went to Ryan's because I go to the town.
Except all changes.
Town website I take a look at it.
I got you now let me do that let me try now see it straight out.
I think the probably the the thing of my most concern is that I you know part of this land is in the village but they're not touching it that's not part of what they're doing so with that I went to a village town map and it it looks like it cuts across the west side of the property along the bed and breakfast and that.
I I don't know they I don't know if they provide an accurate survey that I thought everything was still.
I'm going to have to access and look and there is a it's something I don't have an exact diagram but it's you know it it you know it's something like this and this little piece here behind the bed and breakfast is in the village and I I was concerned that they're going down the north exit onto Astor Drive through the Wells property but then they're gonna have an entrance and exit on the hill it sounds pretty scary I mean when you reach the top of that hill in the library I come out of that library all the time top of the hill in the library there straight downhill to the town highway department they just pick up speed and that's where an entrance and exit is proposed which is a concern it's gonna be a very dangerous intersection and then is there is there planning this thing for walkability there is a sidewalk that ends at the library on the south side there is a nothing there'd have to be a sidewalk going across the bed and breakfast property until you reach the cauldron house as we call it which has a sidewalk there to try to walk would they be coming down that road walking or is there another way of walkability planned through this?
They propose to have a sidewalk along Ryan Cliff Road from the entrance on Ryan Cliff Road up to the on the south side of the the street.
That means pedestrians have to cross that.
No no on the on the north side.
The north side okay.
So they're proposing to have a sidewalk connection but it is really tight there there's you know they're gonna have to remove rock and there's a stone wall there that they're gonna be having to rebuild or it's tough.
If they can do it the people will be safe but the cars that's a bad I was thought I thought there is there is saying this might be down by the flat area where the highway department is but having it happen these people fly down the hill people are flying you know going to city tomorrow you go in the dark in the morning and they just come over that hill racing to the train station.
I actually took a look at the site distances and everything in that area and I wouldn't propose a driveway where they're showing it not only comes out of probably the worst spot along.
It is the worst spot.
But it also involves huge amount of grading because they're taking that street that interior street.
Like this.
Up the steepest part of the site across the steepest slopes so they're gonna have to put a whole big cut into that into that.
Otherwise it'd be like when you come out you'd be like this. Cars flying over the hill that blind spot.
There's two places you could put a driveway on Ryan Cliff Road one is it down closer to the creek so you would be able to see up past the highway rise and you would have a longer distance to the left where people come around that corner and come down the hill so you'll have longer site distance.
But what what?
And the other place is to put it is across from the library.
At the top that's right in front of the bed and breakfast.
Is that across the is the suggested entrance across from the library is that within the parcel?
Not see the the hospital owns all that land but because it's half is in the town and half is in the village they're two separate parcels.
This is in the village and this is the bed and breakfast here's the library drive and so this is the top top of the hill at the library and then you go straight down to the highway department and they want right at that part of the hill.
Okay.
To where the entrances which is.
So across from the library would be basically an intersection at the library and park entrance and the that that type of entrance would go to the side of the existing bed and breakfast closer to the village center.
Okay but they would it involves two parcels now.
Yeah.
And cooperation between the town and the village that's what I my recommendation to the supervisor was that they first require that the applicant provide a complete sort of comprehensive system of connecting streets for all those properties back there so they know if they're building when they're building in the right place that'll facilitate connections between the adjacent properties and will cut off access points.
So by by requesting and being granted interested agency status would that give us the ability to comment?
Yeah you could comment even if you weren't an interested agency what it does require them is to circulate to you.
Yeah we have to get all of the documentation and the latest documentation.
Right.
We can.
So they'll circulate all the stuff to us and we have the right to comment either as private citizens or as a board.
When I was on the Thompson Masarela Park Committee we were going over this DOT was very very specific as to where they wanted the new library entrance they wanted it over the hill on the flat parts and it was sometime for somebody to see a car coming out of the library as they came up that hill and DOT is never going to approve something like that that spot obviously we had a large fight with them over the Star Library entrance this entrance is is quite crazy but the sidewalk is concerned about and I don't see a problem with the letter I mean even though it's all red and.
Well the fear to the letter of the market was just it felt. Well, the fear to the letter of the market was just, it felt like a strong argument that we're the village planning board and we might to be involved in the process. So I cut out a lot of the arguments because there were many of them, so I guess the fundamental.
The property is partly in the village and we would like to be involved in that for, in terms of sidewalks, walkability and this insane entrance, which I don't think DOT is going to let happen.
I'm good with the wording. I'm fine with the wording as revised here. It says we'd like to be actively participate in the secret review, et cetera, and this is why. And because the objective here is just to be granted interesting, interested agency status and get the documentation. And I think we should move ahead with that and do that. And are there any, does anyone else think any verbiage should be added to this request?
I, I think it's, you don't have to torture over it, it's just a request for status and I can't imagine they would dispute it.
I, I motion that we take the request as, as amended here and make it official and submit it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I just seconded.
Okay, who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So are we going to get a clean copy, are we to sign it or just email it to Elizabeth?
Probably once we have the clean version, share the final version, we'll have you come in and sign it.
Okay.
And then that can be submitted to the town.
Okay. All right, then the, the second item is, it wasn't here.
We moved the tea people up the discussion.
Okay.
You don't have to send it to us. Sure, we can go out of order. The chair can go out of order. Come on up then, Dennis.
Yes, I forgot that the tea, tea people. What, what would you like to talk about?
Hi, my name's Dennis Massey. My wife and I, June, June, we're going to try and open a tea store here in Ryan. We're going to serve bubble teas, which is originally made from a black tea with milk and some kind of a sweetener along with tabby of the pearls. We're going to sell tea-based drinks. So there are a lot of variations now of milk teas. And along with that, there are fruit teas. We're going to sell tea-based smoothies in addition to premium teas. We are going to offer snacks, cookies, that kind of stuff. We will have very limited seating, but it will be hoping that people will come in and have a teapot of tea and enjoy it and relax. And that's what we hope to do.
What is, where is this riding?
6384 Mill Street.
So the old telephone company building chair, it's where a grand crew used to be and most recently a wine bar attempted to open. They did receive approvals. However, due to certain financial constraints, they were unable to officially open and actually be a wine bar. So that approval status still stands for this low, low, low location.
And the parking.
Being that they are, would be sort of service restaurant or retail restaurant, they, it's a permitted use.
Yeah, and so the parking is part of the frontier parking plan?
Yes, and they have less because originally the wine bar wanted seating along their bar.
Right.
They don't have, obviously they don't have a bar. So they would not have as many seating as.
I don't think we'd have any problem with this, but you didn't make an application.
Not time enough.
Oh.
For the, for the sign.
Right.
So all you need is a sign permit?
Yep.
Because it's like use?
Yep.
We will use timely signs to do that and they will apply for the permit forms.
All right, very good.
And that's probably, I believe, an.
April 4th.
But still we will open without a sign, we can deal with that, not a big deal.
The only thing I'll say, and I know you're not the property owner, and every time somebody comes in regarding the telephone building, I say this and they still haven't fixed it. The sidewalk out in front of that place is extremely dangerous.
Right, that was something I wanted to ask about was the area between the sidewalk and the street.
Right.
That's a mud pit.
Yes.
Would there be a problem if we were to put some gravel there to try and get rid of the mud? So it isn't a problem for people who park out there who cross the sidewalk?
I, I would prefer not gravel.
Pardon?
I would prefer not gravel. I would suggest to the village that they shouldn't allow stone in those areas because those.
What would you?
Loose stone. What I would put in there is dirt.
Okay.
And ground cover.
All right.
Something that you don't have to mow or take care of.
Okay.
You know, something like myrtle.
Because we definitely want to.
That grows anywhere and puts out nice little flowers and people can step on and it doesn't really kill it.
All right.
But that's just my suggestion, I don't know, it's, it's actually state property, state jurisdiction, but maintained by the village, so.
Those are usually maintained by the property owners.
I know.
Yeah.
It's nominally given to the village and the village gives it to the property owners.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So you might have to just ask the village what you can do in that property.
What John just suggested sounds great.
All right, good, because yeah, we had the same complaint issue with that. We didn't like that mud pitness there.
Yeah, and it's a real ankle hurdle, somebody was going to bust their leg on that.
Right, exactly. All right, good, so we will look into getting some dirt put out there to bring it up to the level of the curb, at least the no higher, and then with some kind of ground cover.
Right, and slow down to a curb so when you open the door, you don't jam.
Right, exactly. Good. That makes us feel better because we weren't sure what we could do there.
Okay, good.
Good.
I would love to see that fixed. I've complained for a year and a half on that, I think.
Victoria was here the last time, so.
What's that?
Victoria was here.
Yeah, I told her.
And you told her.
It's still the same way.
Yeah.
And I don't understand why the owner doesn't see it as a huge liability issue.
Maybe we can be a little clearer. We were going to, I've got to look it up to see what your requirements are. We'd like to put a bench in front of it as well so people can actually sit there up against the building. Even though we know it's slanted there, the bench could be set so people could sit there. So I was going to ask what the requirements are for that to occur.
We, we allow benches in front of, as long as the sidewalk's wide enough.
I think you know you do.
Okay, got it.
These specific chapters and section that addresses that.
Because we want to conform to that and we like to have a place for people to sit out there with a milk tea and just kind of relax for a little bit.
Okay.
The trouble with having benches in the front of a village is, is people gather around benches, they put their feet out, they have the dogs on a leash in front of the bench and it blocks the sidewalk.
And a lot of other stuff, yeah.
And so what we've suggested is, one of the subcommittees in the confidence of the process is you put the bench on the street side.
Wow.
Perpendicular.
Okay.
Into the sidewalk, so when you gather or put your feet out or have your dog, it doesn't block the sidewalk.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's enough room there for a corporate bench.
I'd have to measure it, I don't know if there's quite enough room there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's also going to be on an angle, so that's not going to work there.
It's a little bit challenging, yes.
I'm not personally in favor of having benches that block the sidewalk.
That's right.
But I don't have any control over it, that's village approval.
But your say does have a lot of sway, so you would rather not see benches, we could avoid them.
Well, that's my personal opinion.
They're legal.
They're reasonable.
The point of the story is that they are legal, you just need to work with Ryan on the legality of it.
All right.
You might be able to put one to say around the corner.
Okay.
You know, there's like a little pedestrian alley between, so you don't block that. But that's on the neighbor's property.
Right, that belongs to, you know, the answer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, you know. It's just, it's important to maintain at least a five or six foot clear zone.
Right.
People don't have to walk off to the, into the verbal and sit around.
Exactly.
People at the bench.
That's fair.
Thanks for helping me.
Oh, not a problem, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry to wait so long.
Thank you. Yeah.
You'd like to help me back, that's a draft recommendation, I wasn't here, I'm, I got a draft letter to the VBA. You wrote, "Afforded nothing to, for a neutral recommendation of staying from commenting on it." This strange fence that runs downhill. So is this, is this still edited, is he being, do you like to look at it? Are you happy with it?
I think there we saw a revised version of it, actually, didn't we?
Yeah, it's revised.
I liked the revised version of it.
I didn't see that, when was that?
Yeah, this is the one.
That's.
No, I put your version and the clean version in the same file for, um, okay.
Where did you put the, I think I said that after you sent the link, I sent my revisions, so that's probably why it's.
I definitely included it, yeah.
Can you hold Ctrl down while you're clicking it?
Oh.
Does that remember, I saved it as a PDF.
Yeah, that always works normally. Control click.
Control click, right?
But not when I've.
Need to get rid of the comments.
Sheesh, man. Yeah, you should be able to see where it says control click to follow that, right.
Not worried, not long.
Just emailed it to you, if you can open up your email. All right.
So the issue is this fence is a solid fence going down, downhill.
Well, not to this.
It's not stepped down, is that, is that the issue?
Yeah.
It's a straight fence, not stepped down.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay, which one of these, one is a red line and one is a.
He wanted.
It just looks like the original one that I just put up here.
Along the north side of my property, I, the fence is falling down, we put a new fence and I said, it's a hill and I don't want the fence to look like that during the night, so every section of fence would drop like a couple of inches and we stepped it down.
Just leave it like that?
This one. This is the clean version?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
Now, this is the original.
Original paper.
Oh. It's going to the net line, hers is the belt.
Here. All right. John Clarkson, Michael P., which were recommendations.
Is this the original or the, the red line?
He has the red line. This is the red line.
That's the final.
This one in your hand is.
That's the original.
I think that's the. That's the original.
I thought this was fine.
Well, if we're happy with it, then Brian could just transmit it to the VBA. You get a clean copy, Krista. Without the red stuff.
Is it easy to see all of this on the road or?
It'll look like a, it'll look like a nice clean letter, this is just.
No, not the, the letter, I mean.
No, you gotta go through the path. There's the path that leads to the high school.
Okay.
And at the end of that path on your right is going to be the section of fence because it's, the fence is in the backyard.
Same, the street too, but that is clearly.
Not clearly from Somers Drive. You gotta, the only really way you take it in is you gotta walk back by the high school.
Okay. So a motion, we accept this as amended?
Second, John.
Who was in favor, wrote for you.
Aye, okay.
What abstention? Because he wasn't there.
Okay. But it's, it's a problem that in, in my 14 years on the board, we have never said to anybody, "Perfect, Alan. Get a saw and go over the top of the fence and cut off 11 inches. Rip out the air conditioner." Never said, "Unto it." Was it better to ask forgiveness?
Yeah.
Than ask permission and then, we've never said to anybody, you know, you knew this going in and you, you know, well, it's, it was the contractor. And, and now you have a fence that's almost a foot higher.
Yeah, this neighborhood is not, you know, in the middle of the historic district or someplace where it's, you know, stands out. It's in somebody's backyard that, and, you know, an area of evidence is judging the variance against the character of the neighborhood and to me, this doesn't affect the character of the neighborhood at all. So we want to pick our battles and say sometime to somebody, "Tear it down." We should do so where it really counts.
Yeah, I wouldn't have suggested they tear it down, I would have suggested they just lower the panels. You know, like. Correct. The, the point I made is this is exactly the same fence as I have and.
No, they could have done it right, there's no doubt about that, it's just too big. Is it big enough to make them do the extra work? And I don't think it is in that location.
Yeah.
Nobody will know that it's more than a foot high, higher.
Yeah.
Unless they have a tape measure in their back pocket.
So it's the longest.
So in other words, this is my fence and this is exactly the fence that they're asking to install.
It's already.
Now, my property slants two feet from front to back. And you can see in this tier, basically, I've got, on this portion of the fence, I have 10 panels. You see this? So what the installer did was every panel, he dropped one and a half inches.
All right.
And it looks like it's following the grid, well, it is following the grid, but if he hadn't done that, there would have been a 15 inch gap at the, at the end. So that's, you know, which is, I think, what the code was intended for, but nonetheless.
It's what I did in my backyard, step it down, it's a hill. And you notice it's a hill, so you look at a fence like that, it's a straight fence.
But in any rate, we, we approved that, that's what we're sending to the, what else we got?
That's all, we have comments from the board.
I'm needing an answer.
Well, I have a correspondence from the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Pertaining to 6579 Springbrook Avenue. I know, every time I gave the address, it was like, where does this exist in the village? This is the old tack shop.
Okay.
So.
Now I'm in Lake Star.
Yeah.
That's what I call it.
So the code, the code enforcement officer wanted me to share this information. I'm not going to read this entire letter. Once I have the final draft, I, I will provide it to the board. So as we all know, the conditional approval that was given to this low location expires on April 30th of this year. And to date, to present date, the owner has not taken any action or submitted any application, which led to a correspondence from Justin to the property owner, which generated a meeting between Justin Ken McLaughlin and Jeffrey Newman, who has experience in land use as well as hopefully be retained by the property owner to represent in future, future meetings. So Mr. Newman provided an update and at the conclusion of this meeting, Mr. Newman was given an appearance ticket that was issued to JPS ARD Ventures LLC, which is the property owner.
What, the property owner of the property or the?
Of the property, property.
I thought the property was all part of the whole.
No, no, it's a separate tack.
That's a separate tack.
So an appearance ticket to appear in village court on the 3rd of May, 2023. However, Mr. Newman did communicate that they're going to make every effort to return to the board between now and then, so April, to either get an extension or to just meet with the board.
Because we, you know, John suggested that, you know, Julian suggested about the cars against the co-work space leaving the front yard. It was a really nice design and they liked it, they agreed with it.
Yes.
That was a long time ago. That was a long time ago.
What Mr. Newman did share, though, is that there's a possibility that the future outlook of this, uh, location is, is going to undergo a change. Um, he didn't want to speculate at that time what that change might be, but, um, he did in, in, indicate that, um, there's willingness to work with what was approved, but potentially it might have, have to change. So, um, hopefully, we, we hear back from Mr. Newman, um, next month. Um, if not, then obviously, there's going to have to be some explaining to do, uh, by the property owner, um, in, in court.
Okay. So I noticed on a couple of occasions that the parking lot was nowhere near as full as it used to be, so I'm wondering if.
The company appears to have laid off, like, 90% of the employees.
That would have been.
Yeah.
And the property's for sale, I think.
Yeah, they're trying to sell it. So the tax shop, Co., and Primrose Hill, and then another parcel that's attached to the school.
All of it.
They're all four separate taxing parcels, but they're all for sale as one big group.
Couple of million dollars.
For $5 million, which, you know, whatever works, but.
Co-work space has been posting, they're rethinking what they do, and they were going to go away, and they're going to come back, and I don't think anything's happening at the schools. I think there is an insurance or some company up there too. Um, I don't know. It's a big parcel.
It's a huge parcel.
At the gateway to the village.
The property owner no longer lives in Reinbeck, and so.
Yes, he's left town, which is.
So the interest in the property seems to be dwindling.
I won't comment on it, but. We had a lot of discussions with the property owner over the years.
I doubt it. Not that it instilled any confidence, but anything good would have happened.
No, but that property, it bites over the pigs, the horses, you know, uh.
The Armond Lake shop?
Huh?
The Armond Lake shop.
The Armond Lake shop, yeah. With the cows and, you know, I, I, we had a lot of debates about having all the farm out of the smell, calling over to Crossmore. From, I said, I said, what, what meaning? I said, I think it's wonderful that you want to, you have animals in all the classrooms. You want to teach kids to milk chickens, but not in the middle of the village. And I believe he has bought a farm way out in the country where they can have animals and all the classrooms. That's good.
I want to ask our audience, was there something, sir, you thought was going to be on the agenda, or are you just here for the entertainment factor? Okay.
I hope you're entertained.
Yeah, just make sure we weren't holding you up from something you thought was going to happen.
Okay. I want to continue the discussion of this. I took a picture. The, the other one I had was from Google Earth, uh, Google Street View, and it doesn't really show the full extent of the problem. That's what it looks like.
Oh, yeah, street.
This is the Reinbeck department store, the, the structure on the roof that is containing the cell.
This thing, that wasn't.
Antenna.
This thing, that wasn't there before.
No, if you look at the net, the, the page before, I don't have a picture of what was there before. What was approved was something that looked like a chimney.
Right.
You can see on the shadow of the aerial, that it was narrow. This is much bigger. I mean, five times as big. And I think taller as well, but it's hard to tell.
This is the old one, this thing.
This plus it's.
Which one is?
That's, that's the original one right there.
Yeah, okay.
And that's just a, this is a better view of that. And you can see it's just plywood up there or some equivalent of plywood. It isn't even bolted together correctly. That's gab.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got a gab in it.
It does look pretty chintzy and, yeah.
And it dominates the building when you stand back and actually look at it.
For sure.
And I looked at our code. We encourage co-location. I don't have any problem with co-location of existing facilities.
Yeah.
Um, but I think what they did is they came in with an eligible facilities request, which is a thing in the communications law, federal communication laws, that allows them to put new things on old equipment if it does change the physical dimensions.
Right.
Of the existing. So they can't go higher, they can't go wider, they replace, they can remove, they can put on new antennas that don't really affect the physical location or dimensions of the building.
We had that issue with the backgrounds.
And, yeah, well, we approved that one. They came to us, we looked at the plans. It didn't do anything that would affect the physical dimensions of the site and the.
But it's federal law says I, I don't really need your approval.
No, no.
I mean.
They have to make an application, and according to the code, they have to come to us, and we have to determine whether the eligible facilities request is eligible. Um, that's how I read it, but Justin may have a different reading. I don't know how, whether this went up with a permit or just, um, they just did it. But it seems to me they should be required to come in and justify what they did. And if indeed it doesn't meet the standards of an eligible facilities request under federal law, then it, they should do something to make it look more like a part of a department store rather than, you know, billboard on top, a brick billboard.
That's fair. So having said these concerns, would the next step be to have, uh, Justin look into the code, state law, federal law, whatever, and come back to us and say, these are my findings on this, and this is what the next step should be? Uh, whether it's asking them to come in and explain themselves or, or what, but we should, it sounds like we want to take some steps.
Well, we asked at the last meeting is if Brian could research the files and come up with what was originally approved, so we have an ammunition as to what was there before, what we approved, and what it looks like now, because I can't find a picture of the original department store that shows it. I don't know if anybody has department store pictures around, but, yeah.
I have. My picture is too old.
Yeah.
I've been 1870 of the guys laying bricks with the building and putting it up.
Yeah, I did find aerials that showed, you know, what it looked like.
But someday a picture from 2010 is going to be historic. You never know.
It doesn't tell, you know, so we approved something up there, and they came in, and we went through a whole thing. We actually required them to put a, a cornice around the top so that it looked like, uh, consistent with the historic building, which I'm not sure they ever did, because I remember acid, they, they never did it, and we required them, and I think they ended up doing it in the long run, but I, I don't have a picture to prove it. So anyway, I don't know. Did Ryan have a chance to find the file on it?
Does Ryan have many chances to do any of what, we're, um, we're, we're still, it's a work in progress.
Okay. I just wanted to continue the, and I had an updated picture that shows everybody how really awful it is. Because the first picture didn't do it justice. So I think the first step is to find what was approved, so that we can compare what's there to what was actually approved. And then perhaps Justin can, um, determine whether there was an eligible facilities request, and whether it was approved inadvertently or mistakenly, um, and find out where we go from there. But I think what's up there now is unacceptable.
True.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Where are we at with minutes?
I don't have any minutes for you right now.
You have minutes on April 4?
Oh, sorry. I don't have any minutes right now, but I will, yeah, for April 4.
April 4th, you have the next meeting.
Okay. So election on the 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, we had a thing from Lydia, a discussion.
Oh, I sent that email yesterday. We can talk about it in April if you'd rather.
What was it about? Remind me.
We just changed the back of the house. I didn't know if we needed to come back and recycle.
Oh, right, right, right.
I think you have to come back for a minute to cycle it if you're changing what was approved.
Okay, we're not changing the footprint. We're just changing the design of the back of the house. So, yeah, happy to come back in. Just, that, that was the question that the email was trying to answer.
Yeah, I read it. Now that you reminded me.
Sure.
But I.
I looked at the pictures that you had, and.
Because it was sent in.
On the front of the house, on your house, there's currently two chimneys. And on the drawings submitted, there's no chimneys, and then, then you had a chimney for a fireplace, and that's being removed. So what I saw yesterday now shows no chimneys anywhere on the house.
Oh, that's a bad move on our part. There, the original chimney, which is in the old shuttered part, remains in the old shuttered part.
Well, there's two there now.
There's one in the old part of the house, and then there's one in the part, well.
In kind of the middle?
Yeah, and the one in the middle is being taken out.
Okay.
Um, and then we were going to put a new one at the back.
But now you're not.
But now we're not, because honestly, construction prices.
When I saw no chimneys, I'm like, well, how is it being heated? Is this going to be mini splits, which aren't on the pictures, or?
No, it's not going to be mini splits. Um, it's going to be a heat pump system.
That would have been my only thing the rest of the drawing. That was fine, but.
But, yeah, the main thing is, um, so, yeah, so this is the, so if you look at the back half of the house, um, the whole, the previous version had the same exact first four.
There's the original.
There's the original. So it's the same exact floor print, I mean, footprint. Um, but there was the chimney, and then the second floor went out to encompass the chimney. You see how that sort of works? Um, we took out the chimney, and now instead of the chimney, it's doors that go out, and then the second floor is pulled back by about four feet.
And none of this will be visible from the street?
No, this is visible from the street. What's, what's visible from the street is the, the, the house face is west, so. Um, you can see, like, the side of the front of the house from the street, like, from the corner, and you can see at parts of the back from, like, Livingston over a couple of fences. Yeah.
Was that an explanation? I was looking at it. I think this, like, where's wall go?
I know, right.
What's the difference between this one and this one?
Yeah.
Going back and forth.
And actually, look at the, um, the east and the east elevation.
The revised, the revised east.
Yeah, the revised east, so you can sort of see there's no chimney there anymore, and now it looks like this.
But just for formality, you should just come on the floor and just make a.
Okay.
Show the differences, and that it's actually smaller.
Yeah.
And less, you know, intense.
Yeah.
Um, but we should just get it for the record.
Okay.
If you do modify the site.
Okay, good. Yeah, the front of the house remains exactly the same. So, yeah, keep in mind.
Like, you're starting to dig?
Hopefully. The end of March, I got, the quote that I got from the government was the end of March, and I was like, it's like the middle of March. Can we get a date?
I would probably go walking by and see a bulldozer back there.
Uh, you, you and me both. You and me both. It's been a really long three years.
We need a jury, don't we?
No.
We have a, we have a motion to adjourn.
He never voted out, so, so it failed, so you better redo it again.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Michael makes the motion. Jeff seconds the motion.
Who's in favor?
I.